Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:04. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. It is September 26th, the evening of our committee, the whole meeting, and the evening of the first presidential debate, so we are going to try to be done by 9:00 PM if we can. I've had a few people ask me, "You're going to be done by 9:00 PM?" So we'll try to be done by 9:00 PM. We're going to move on to the second agenda item, to the district achieving report. Mr. Burt, can I ask you for you to pause after each section or whatever so that we can have a chance to ask questions as we go along? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right. So I'll turn the meeting over to you.
I'm willing to forego my presentation if you want to get it earlier.
No, this is important stuff.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Again, this is an annual presentation to the board on student achievement from the previous school year. We're going to try to do things a little bit differently than in years past. Instead of going assessment by assessment, we're going to try to go subject by subject. But just to remind you of some of the measurements that we do use in district, we use obviously a smarter balance. Just a reminder, this is the second year, the spring 2016. Data is the second year of usable data that we have, so it's a relatively new assessment. The PSAT, again, a new assessment, that is as of October of 2015, so a year ago. That was a newly redesigned assessment. The SAT is again, a newly designed assessment as of March of 2016. The CMT, CAPS, Science, that is not a newly redesigned assessment as of this year. That's over 10 years old. Again, that's given in grades five, eight, and 10. And then something we use locally called NWA, Northwest Education Association, that is a local assessment. It's taken online, typically given twice a year, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that assessment when we get there. So a few definitions, and I'll try to reiterate these as we're going through because I know that we can get into edusepeak, so I want to give you some heads up on these. So the first one is at goal. Typically, that is a goal set either by the state, or set by us, or NWA, or the College Board. And typically, that means the percentage of students achieving at a certain level. Benchmark is very similar to cut scores or at goal. A growth score, that indicates a percentage of students making gains appropriately year over year. In other words, if a student from last spring to this spring was supposed to make X amount of progress, we'll report that. So if 50% of the kids made that progress, we'll report that. If a lot more reported, we'll report that as well. So again, typically, we do spring to spring growth. Year over year, this is data for the same grade but not the same students. So we're going to look at fifth grade, for instance, in math, and we'll look at three years of data, 2014, 2015, 2016. Those are all different students, but for fifth grade. It does give us some indication of how our curriculum instruction assessment is performing at that grade, but it's very difficult to make comparisons for unlike students. On the other hand, cohort data, this is data for the same students over time, so we might report out students in fourth grade, then what are their scores in fifth grade, and then what are their scores in sixth grade. Now, we put cohort in quotations here because we can't guarantee in this report that those are the exact same students. We have students move in and out of district, but we would estimate between 90 and 95% of our students year over year are the same. So we do believe that's a valid measurement. Any questions on the definitions? Just a quick reminder of our district goals. These are the overarching goals. As you recall, we have three major goals, and they're broken down into more specific goals, and then two subset of each one of those goals. As I said, we're going to start with math first rather than go through assessments. And we're going to try to do more of a narrative. You will see a lot of graphs. You will see a lot of bar graphs, some line graphs to make it different. Dr. Fieser did say I used too much green, so I apologize for that. So you occasionally see a little blue, a little red, but a lot of green. So we're going to start with math. And how are we doing? Well, we do have positive news in terms of growth, and we believe we're moving in the right direction. And again, year over year data, we believe there's some positive indication. What that means is grade to grade, but different students. Okay? Just to remind you, this is last year's math scores. Can someone move the mouse down for me? Yeah. Just kind of down the corner there. Thank you. There we go. Even more of me. Now I'm going to pay attention to it the whole night. Thank you. All right. So this is last year's scores. Again, the first iteration of the S-Back for grades three through eight for math, and the percentage of students at level three or four, which is at goal. This is this year's data. So year over year, grade three, you can see some improvements, different students, 53 to 59%, grade four, 49 to 61%, et cetera, grade five, grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. Now, in every grade level, we're seeing some improvement in some grades more than others. However, even though we do see some growth, the achievement scores or the percentage of students at goal is not where we want them, and we know that, and we're aware of that, and we're going to make sure that we address that. And to give us some indication, this is a little busy here, but I wanted to give you groupings. This is typically, we provide you with data from the state as well as for other similar districts. In this case, you'll see this is math on S-Back again. This is grade three, grade four, and grade five. Milford is the dark blue to the far right.
Far left.
Sorry, far left. The other left. Thank you. So the second one is the state, and then you can see the groupings here. One thing that we are particularly interested in here, you can see in grade five, this is an area of concern for us, seemingly though, be an area of concern for the districts that are in this comparison group as well. Again, we're seeing growth in grades three and grade four, and relatively similar to other comparison groups. Grade six through eight, again, the same configuration in terms of districts. We're the dark blue, far left, grade six, grade seven. Similar groupings in grade seven, actually close to the top for this, in the middle for grade six. And another area of concern for us is grade eight. Any questions so far? So to give you a different perspective, now we're going to take a look at a member I referred to as cohort data. That was year over year, different students, same grade. Now this is the same students in different grades. You can figure that one out. So this is, I'll quickly walk you through this. This is achievement data from 2015 to 2016. And here in grade three, this is students in grade three in 2015. And then that's their scores as they moved into fourth grade for this past spring. So you can see grade three to grade four, grade four to grade five, grade five to grade six, six to seven, and seven to eight. Again, mostly the same, we're estimating between 90 and 95% of the same students. Important piece here that we do want to pay attention to is we're seeing growth in grade three. And to give you some indication of what that means is that the test is harder. It's one year harder. So from grade three, I know this is going to be a shock to all of you, from grade three to grade four, the test gets harder because we have higher expectations in grade four. So not only did the same percentage of students achieve the same level the following year, there was an increase in the number of percentage of students that were at that achievement level. Same thing, we're going to see in grades, I'll get this to work, in grades five and six, we're seeing at least a slight climb. Obviously, there's another portion to the graph that we have some concerns. Grade four to grade five, we're seeing a slight decrease. What that means is, is that those students in grade four were at about the 49% of students were at grade level, or sorry, at goal, and there was a slight decrease. Same thing in grade seven, to grade five, I mean, sorry, to grade eight, there was a decrease. And as you recall in the previous slides, these are two areas that we're going to be paying attention to, grade five and grade eight, that is something that we're aware of, and that we're going to take a closer look at. Any questions so far? Yes?
Through you, Madam Chair, Administration. So what's going on in math that the grades seem, the percentages seem so low?
We're going to get to that in a second.
Okay.
All right. And then we'll give you an opportunity. We have Lisa Swanson here this evening.
Sure.
Our supervisor for math is going to help us out with that as well, as well as obviously in the crowd, we have a number of administrators that can speak to that as well. So as I said, we're taking a closer look at grade five and grade eight. And one of the things that's going to help us examine this, we have, again, our local assessment. It's not created locally. This is a national consortium. About 5 million students take this assessment every season, typically fall, winter, and spring. It's been going on for about 20 years. It's a computer assessment. Students take it on Chromebook, on a desktop. It's computer adaptive. It truly is computer adaptive. So if you're in second grade, but you can score at a 10th grade level, it'll ask you questions up to the 10th grade level. So it's truly computer adaptive for the most part. It is skill-based, and it is related to the Common Core. It provides us with a multitude of reports, which we're not going to go through tonight, but their main emphasis is on growth. So that's one thing that we're going to take a look at, is how are students growing? Because this is a good indicator for us. We have had this for, I want to say, five years now, four years? So it's starting to give us good longitudinal data over time. What you have here are two graphs. This is achievement or at-goal level. On the left-hand side, this is, the NWA does provide us what are basically grade level expectation scores. So if you're in fifth grade, at the end of fifth grade, you're supposed to get a score of, say, 200. So this indicates that over the past three years, this is three years of data, 2014, 2015, 2016, and the spring, what percentage of our fifth-grade students, according to the NWA, were at grade level? And you can see, it's flat for fifth grade. Not the same students, it's fifth graders, then the next group of fifth graders, then the next group of fifth graders. But in essence, it's flat. What I want you to recall over here is that S-Back data I just gave you, it's a slight increase. Different students, same year over here, 2015, 2015, 2016, 2016. And the interesting thing for us is that the NWA, if we look at all of the S-Back scores and the NWA scores, there's a good correlation for the most part, especially in language arts and reading. And for the most part, most grade levels in math. So if students are at 58%, 58% of our students are at goal level in NWA, about 58% are in S-Back. This is one of those outliers. Why is it that NWA is telling us that at the spring of 2016, 58% of our students are expected norm level for fifth grade, but the S-Back came back with 48%? So there is a difference. The next thing we want to take a look at, it's going to be right in the middle here. This is growth. This is a little tricky, so I'm going to try to explain this to you. It's spring over spring. The nice thing about the NWA assessment, this may not appear in print outside of this, the nice thing about this assessment is that it'll say, if you're at this level in fourth grade, you should grow this much by the end of fifth grade. And it'll tell us that. It'll tell our teachers that. It'll tell our administrators, this is how much students should grow over the course of 12 months, which is an important indicator. So no matter where they start, let's say that they're significantly below grade level or significantly above grade level, it'll give us, they should grow this much. So what is this telling us? That of those students in the middle here, 2014, 54% of fifth graders made their growth goal. 55% of the fifth graders in 2015 made their growth goal, and only 43% of the students made their growth goal in this past year. That means from the end of fourth grade to the end of fifth grade, they didn't grow as much as NWA said they should. And we typically would like to see that as well. So this is, again, another indicator. This is just one more piece of data. We're trying to puzzle these things together. As I believe I said in the January report, we're trying not to look at single data points. We're trying to get a full picture. And this will help us say, hmm, why is it that we didn't grow as much? Now, you might be interested to think, well, how is it possible that this may didn't grow, but there's the cut score? Well, typically, what that means is there was a really strong group of fourth graders. They didn't need to grow as much to still reach the fifth grade benchmark. So it's a pretty interesting explanation. Any questions? It's a little tricky, but it is just one more indicator for us to look at. And again, looking at fifth grade as a possible area of concern. Yes?
But we're saying here that pretty much just a little over 50% of our students made the growth that they should have?
Correct.
Wouldn't we like to see that a lot higher than just 50%?
We would. And we have in other, and for example, in many of the, in the middle school, in ELA and math, it was closer to mid 70s this past year. So we were very thrilled by that. I believe it's all three grades in all three buildings. We saw tremendous growth.
In what?
NWA scores. Correct.
But not in ELA.
In language arts.
But not in math.
Yes.
That's incredible, because I took a look at the S-Back scores for the middle school, and there was virtually no growth year over year.
This is what we're taking. We did see some growth. Again, if you go back to your math scores, relatively flat. You're correct. Sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So we are looking at that, which is why we're concerned by, we're seeing tremendous growth. But again, that is for NWA scores, and we're seeing, you may be starting below grade level, and you can achieve your growth but still be below grade level. So this is something that we have the administrators working on with our teachers to ensure that you're significantly below grade level. You can't just make one year's growth. Because if you're a grade level behind, you make one year growth, where are you at the end of that? You're a grade level behind. So we are working with our teachers to ensure that we are targeting populations of students that are below, significantly below, to ensure that we're trying to make more than one year's growth. And we believe, and we firmly believe that as we continue that growth model, we're going to see the end scores, the goal scores, the cut scores improve over time.
One more classification. So that first set of bar graphs shows us that basically, fifth grade, we have just over 50% at grade level by NWA.
Correct.
The last set is the same.
This is S-Back?
S-Back, it's the same thing.
Yep.
And then the middle one is how much they grew, which is what you were just saying. You could have a lot of kids that are really low, that have grown a lot, but we're not seeing.
And this is, as Mr. Daganis, the point, we are concerned about the achievement scores in math, and that's something that we're going to speak to in a moment.
Yeah. I mean, I'm concerned about the achievement scores in math, but I'm also concerned about what the heck has gone on in the middle schools? And the lack of growth in the S-Back scores from year to year. There was some growth in the math, and there was virtually no growth in English Language Arts.
If you give me a moment, we can get to some feedback from the folks in the buildings and from our math. So again, same thing in eighth grade. This is, we're going to see a discrepancy here. Again, so we're seeing positive growth, and we're seeing positive scores, but it's an anomaly. This is one of the areas, as opposed to a lot of the other areas, that we see a good correlation between our NWA map scores and the SBA scores. You can see here, 71 to 43. Only a slight increase year over year in eighth grade. So if we take a look at the growth, however, this is what I was speaking to before. You know, here, this is the growth, the percentage of students making growth in 2014, 2015, and 2016. So this is, this is something that we need to explore further. How is it possible that we had such tremendous growth scores, but we had low achievement? And our best guess is that we had a large group of students that were below grade level, and even though they made significant growth, that didn't get them to that cut score. But we can't stop that progress. We can't stop that emphasis. We can't stop that work, because if we continue to grow more and more students, eventually we will see this, these scores increase. That is where we are placing our bets on in this case. So similar, again, this is NWA, SBA, at grade level essentially, and these are the growth scores. So this is an opportunity now, we're going to try to talk about some next steps. I think since there was a specific question to the middle schools, if we had some folks who'd like to give us some insights, Mr. Cavanna, would you like to give us some thoughts?
Sure. So, Mr. Dobson, Ms. Williams, and myself, you know, we care profoundly about our kids and about our teachers and our communities.
Speak up, Mr. Fieser.
Sure. We care profoundly about our teachers, our kids, and our community. And we understand that the buck stops with us in the building level. We also understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and the first thing to do that is to have a clear understanding of where you are. And as we worked with our staffs to break down this data on NWA and SBA, that was the first thing that made extremely clear to us. You know, this is the area that we need to work on, and we need to roll our sleeves up and get some things done. So what we've done in the middle school last year going into this year, and our plan moving forward to address some of these concerns, is really focus on NWA last year, and focusing on growth. So how do we, as Mr. Burt said, have our students be able to make up for the grade levels that they're missing? To meet their projected growth is one of the terms that we've been working on. We've tied that to the evaluation system. So the teachers are part of their evaluation system, have IAGDs, and one of their IAGDs is tied to NWA. After we worked, and hopefully Mr. Burt will show this, we showed some success within NWA within math and reading. Looking again at our S-Back scores for this year, we are very concerned. So how then do we capitalize on some of the growth in NWA and bridge that gap to SBA? And our thoughts are really on focusing on the SBA claims. So this year, as we woke up the teacher evaluation system, specifically at NWA and their IAGDs, had the staff getting ready for their goal-setting meetings, had the staff looking at current data and where the students need to be successful. Got through that process, brings us to about October right now, and now we're shifting to the claims and SBA. If you looked at the claims and reading and math, they're very similar to the district goals that you set for. So our idea now is to show the alignment between what's happening in NWA, to smarter balance, to the curriculum, and making sure that we're not teaching toward those tests. I just made some notes for myself. And the whole thing is embedding those specific skills into the current instruction and curriculum. This is not an add-on. We're not teaching toward a specific test, but we're making sure that the students, the staff, the administration, we understand the connection between the curriculum, NWA, NWA to SBA, SBA to the claims, and to the Common Core curriculum. So as we work forward through this process, our hope is that we're going to have significant gains next year in SBA that mirror some of the growth that we've had in NWA. But the part that I just want the board to know is, we understand, and we have the sense of urgency of our scores are not acceptable for where we want them. They're not acceptable, but all our kids need the opportunity to be successful, and we believe in that profoundly. And I appreciate the question on the middle schools, because it's something that's close to our hearts. When these scores came out, and the building principals met with the supervisors, you know, we were scratching our heads, saying, we need to do better. We need to do better for our kids and for our schools. And that's just something that I want to make sure the board understands, that we believe in our kids, we believe in our teachers, we know we need to work hard, and we will work hard, and we have a strong plan from the floor.
Thank you. Do you want to talk to a little bit about some of the plans for curriculum?
Sure. Absolutely. So since Mr. Cavanna just spoke about the middle schools, I'm going to carry on to that conversation. You know, this summer, we had seventh and eighth grade teachers in here for three days getting training on our new middle school program. It took us five years since Common Core came out to find a program that we really felt really would represent what are those claims that SBA is measuring, which are problem-solving skills, communicating using mathematics. The shifts in math are tremendous. And at that eighth grade year, what used to look like eighth grade really looks more like algebra. They're solving equations, they're solving systems of equations, which is when two equations intersect with each other. That's a topic I taught in Algebra I for 15 years in this district. It was never a topic in middle school math. So really getting our teachers to really understand the significant changes of just, really, their content knowledge and their implementation of that with kids. We can't just shove it down their throats and say, this is what it is. You know, really getting to understand all the connections between those things that I used to teach in Algebra I, that now, an eighth grade teacher, that's what we teach our core students. So really, we worked for three days. They did a lot of planning and preparation together. We had an outside consultant working with them, and that consultant said that these are the best teachers, honest to goodness, I kid you not, the best group of teachers that really were pulling up their sleeves, they weren't dancing around the edges, they were really digging in and asking tough questions, like, what do you mean that this lesson says that we have to ask this question, this, and why that question? What is the purpose of that question? What does that really drive at in student understanding? Because they can, they're math people, they get it very technically, but it's different to understand the math than to teach it to kids. And so really getting to, why is it that question that I need? Why does the text actually ask it that way? When I would have asked it this way for, you know, from what I know? So really digging into that work in middle school specifically. So this is really their first year, seventh, it's last year, sixth grade implemented Connected Math with your support of that new program. And now this year, seventh and eighth grade decided they didn't want to wait anymore, because it was kind of going to be a slow, seventh was going to get it, and then eighth grade. But our seventh and eighth grade team really met together and said, we need to change something. It's not working. They recognize that. And so we really moved on that last year to begin that process, this year of new learning for them. And that program specifically is called Connected Math. And to me, that's fundamentally a shift, as opposed to thinking of, you know, like math in units and just segments, of we learn how to add two-digit numbers, then we're going to multiply and kind of, typically, we compartmentalize it a lot. And this is really that. It's Connected Math. They're connecting every single topic all the time, and it's all problem-based learning, which means it's not only just mathematics, but it's also, my friend over here, my ELA friend, they've got to be able to read, understand the text in front of them, and then figure out what mathematics works with that. So shifting that thinking has been a tremendous lift for our middle school teachers. And when we looked at NWA, we were delighted to see the amount of growth that we're making with some of this work, but we didn't, we're not seeing it on SBA. And so we're really trying to dig in. And fifth grade, it's decimals and it's fractions. That's really what they're learning, and we're making sure, we looked, we revisited our curriculum. Is it, are we spending enough time on these topics? Are we spending too much time on things? When I came to this position, we spent all the fall adding and subtracting whole numbers. And so that shift of, we don't even, we're done with that when we get to fifth grade. Now we're really moving on to fraction and decimal understanding and building that, has been, again, the shifts are so significant for our staff and for our understanding of what this assessment is asking of our students. And then sometimes it's, you know, we assess them, but it's not like we give it on the last day of school, and that's the other challenge. Because math, the coordinate plane is a very specific target that they have, but if we teach that in May and we test in April, like, they're not going to have the coordinate plane, and then that, all of a sudden, our scores go down. And so there's so many things to consider when we're building really a full curriculum, that we continue to try to pinpoint what it is and try to come up with answers to how to make sure that our students are really showing us the best that they've got, and that we want better than what we saw in our scores, for sure. Hope that explains a little bit of the lot of work we're doing.
Mr. Jack Zensky.
Okay. My problem here is I think we're missing the big issue related to middle schools. And that is that East Shore in math was 17.7 points behind Harborside, and West Shore was 19.5 points behind Harborside. I mean, we've been concerned about the fact that the high schools seem to have a gap in academic performance. But this is a gap that, you know, is just huge compared to the gap that ever existed between the high schools.
This is something that we're aware of. It's not as if we're unaware of that, and we do disaggregate scores by building, by grade, by teacher. We do all the disaggregation. The intent of this presentation truly is a district-wide. You know, if it's a different mandate from the board that we present, you know, by building, that would be something else we'd have to present.
We typically do not, as a board, look at individual schools. We look at the district as a whole, and, you know, because there are lots of things that might attribute to the test scores at individual schools that are not necessarily academically related, but related to other, you know, the makeup of the school. Dr. Fieser, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
What I was going to say is, is that, so I was as disturbed as you are with respect to when the Smarter Balance scores came, quite honestly, not just for the middle school, but there were issues, you know, across all the levels. On the other hand, what I would say is, is that, and, you know, we didn't just, you know, we don't generally lose in our presentation one school versus another, but if you were to look at the NWA performances in middle schools, the gap is much, much smaller between and among all three schools. the gap is much, much smaller between and among all three schools. Much, 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 much smaller. So it begs the question in my mind, and I, you know, I don't know for sure, but, you know, we've been working with NWA solidly for four straight years. We introduced it, I think, five years ago, but we really have been, and so there's a familiarity with it on the part of the teachers, on the part of the principals, understanding how to make use of the data because the reports are really rich, et cetera. And Smarter Balance, it's our second year. Is that an excuse? No. But I would say that we've put a tremendous amount of energy into NWA because there were the years when we didn't have anything. But we need to do the same kind of energy that we would put into Smarter Balance, particularly in math, because, and, you know, I've heard this, I know that this is the truth, with the changes in the Common Core, math changed radically in comparison to Language Arts. It's a radical, radical shift. And obviously, in terms of Smarter Balance, we have a lot of work to do. We're better in NWA, we're not where we want to be, we're better in it, but in Smarter Balance, we have a lot of work to do. And so what I would say to you is I think that's why it's so important that we look at not just one indicator. And that's not to diminish Smarter Balance because we're owning it, but it's to say it's not the only indicator that I think we need to look at. I think we could look at some pieces in, you know, in our NWA and point to tremendous growth on the part of kids. And this would be, for example, in middle school, since you raised the middle school. So then sort of saying, "Well, okay, how come kids are doing it here, but they're not doing it here?" And those are really legitimate questions that I know that we're posing. But, you know, we pose, you know, across the board with all of the folks here.
Can I ask one quick question? Am I to understand you correctly that what I heard you say was that, you know, I'm looking back on page four of our presentation. From SBA math, from 2015 to 2016, there was, I don't see any area that declined. There was growth, some more growth in some years than others. But, so there was some growth, but clearly we're not where we would like to be. Is that what I heard you say?
Correct. And, you know, pointing out grade six is relatively flat. We are moving in the right direction. It's not where we want to be, and you speak to any of the principals in this room, and they would all say the same thing, is that we're not where we want to be. There's always room for growth, and even speaking to a discrepancy between buildings, just because there is discrepancy doesn't mean the building with the highest achievement score doesn't mean that there's significant areas for improvement there as well. So we're well aware of that, and we're well, and we are addressing it, and it is something that is in the forefront that we're discussing. We've discussed at our administrative meetings, there, I just went to a couple faculty meetings that they're discussing with their teachers as part of the goal-setting process. This is not something that we're trying to put on the back burner, this is forefront of our minds.
Dr. Gregory?
So what I heard you say is that the Smarter Balance assessment's showing a gap between schools, and the NWA is not showing the same gap between schools?
There is, let's say, there's different measurements on the NWA because there's different reports, and the NWA is about growth. And I would say the difference between the schools in the terms of growth was minimal. There were similar achievement gaps as well, as not as marked as there were as Mr. Jagosinski spoke of.
Okay. No, I was just wondering if the Smarter Balance wasn't measuring necessarily the same things that the NWA was measuring, and whether that's a very different conversation, that was very different people?
I would say, again, back to my point, grade five and grade eight are outliers when you do the correlation between the two assessments. ELA is very, very close, Language Arts is very close. Actually, one of the reports that NWA is able to provide us is a predictor on our state assessment, in this case, the SBA. So it was very accurate, mostly, again, in the ELA, but in many of the math grades as well. And we're seeing significant correlation. That's why we have to take a closer look, what happened in fifth and eighth grade? You know, one indication, you know, as Ms. Swanson said, that, you know, did we take the test too early? The window is open relatively early, it's open in March. So you're missing 60 days of instruction. So working with the state, we've closed the window tremendously and moved it later into the year.
I guess my question's a slightly different question. I'm just wondering if the outliers in fifth and eighth grade were similar in other districts, not to minimize the gaps, but if there were differences beyond Milford? If that might be a function of a relatively new assessment?
I wouldn't know if you're talking about in other districts with NWA and SBA, I don't know that.
No, I'm just, I'm offering that up as...
I could probably get some information from NWA itself on that, and they do a tremendous amount of studies. And they usually come out with some adjustments. But if you take a look back on page five in your handout, you know, you can see the difference, grade three, grade four, grade five. Just look at it at a high level. You know, overall, it's relatively high, and then grade five, and you turn the page, you know, there's not consistency in any district that's cited here. You know, they have highs and lows depending upon the grade. So there's inconsistencies in other districts, not that that's something we're going to use as an excuse or as a justification, but, you know, it was just interesting to us, the grouping in grade five in particular.
When all is said and it's done, the math performance is not where we want it to be. That's a reality, and it's hands down. And interestingly enough, it's across the entire state. So I'm not suggesting, again, as an excuse, but if you look at the overall performance of kids across the state in math, it's significantly lower than it is in Language Arts, significantly, which is a major problem. And you're going to see it on the PSAT, and you're going to see it on the SAT as well. So there's a real issue. You know, what the, the issue, why is happening across the state, I'm not sure. We think we have a pretty good handle on why it's happening here. Some of it is curriculum, some of it is where we've placed our emphasis or not placed our emphasis. You know, I think we have to look also at some of our interventions in saying, "Are we doing the right interventions with respect to the kids who are, you know, the highest needs kids, who are taking the same tests?" So we know we absolutely have work to do. We absolutely know that. And we also know that between and among the schools, we don't dismiss the differences between and among the schools by any means. You know, we do, we certainly, I can tell you for sure, the three middle school, I mean, they met together. They agonized over the scores, all of them. The eight elementary principals did the same thing, looking at how each did, et cetera. You know, and trying to learn from one another, and as far as what worked, what didn't work, why somebody did well in a particular claim versus another group, et cetera, or in, you know, some of the areas on the NWA. So that kind of analysis is just ongoing. I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Jagosinski?
Yeah, I just want to address the issue of, you know, we have multiple tests, SBA, and we have, you know, NWA. Really, whether we like it or not, or whether it's, you know, a good test or a bad test, doesn't matter. But we're ultimately measured on SBA. And, you know, NWA is nothing more than a tool that we can use to improve our instructional method. But the bottom line is the SBA.
Correct.
Correct?
Absolutely.
If I could just, just, more quickly. And as the principal of West Shore and my assistant principal here, we know we have a lot of work to do. We know that our kids deserve better, because they deserve to, they have tremendous potential. And our bet, and our thought, and our plan, and that we've worked through thoughtfully, is that the NWA is a perfect starting place, as you said, the tool. And now as we shift to SBA and the claims within SBA, I think we're going to see the benefits moving forward. But it's just important for this board to know that I believe in my school. My school is a great place, and we have a lot of work to do. And the bottom line is that's what people are going to define our result. And we understand that, we agonize over that, we own it, we're sick about it. We also believe profoundly that we're going to improve. And I just want to say that for you.
I think it's important to also remember that it's only the second year of the Sback test being our district assessment, our state assessment. And clearly, you know, over the years, the work that's been done with the NWA, because that, as you said, that was really the only thing that we had for the last several years to work with, you know, it's paid off, I think, in seeing, you know, the growth that we've seen. And I would, I personally would be, will be interested to see what, you know, what one more year of Sback work, you know, will bring. You know, hopefully we'll see improvements in the next round.
If I may make one final point before we move on, is that this is a measurement of our instruction in our curriculum. We do not want to get into teaching to the test. That is not something we want to do as a district. I would not ask my principals to do that, our instructional supervisors, our students, our teachers to do that. This is a measurement of how well we are instructing our students based on national standards and our state standards. So that is our emphasis. We will use the claims, because there's some disaggregated information we can get from the assessment, and we can get some guidance from it. But I've worked in too many districts that we're going to go and try to find out question stems from the Sback to ensure that all of our assessments are exactly lined up to the SBA. And that is a dangerous road to go down, and it doesn't lead to really good instruction or good thinking. So our philosophy is if we have sound instruction based on the Common Core, then we will see improvement in our test scores. And that is, that's where our emphasis, and that's exactly what we're, and it should be for every student across the entire district, no matter what school they are in. And that's where our standard is, so.
I mean, that's very reasonable. I mean, you know, that's the approach I would expect, which is right.
Guys, one question. One question is for clarification. I'm hearing correctly, the NWA and the Sback are both based on Common Core?
Correct.
But they may have a different emphasis or different areas of focus?
It's just a matter of the assessment itself, the assessment tool. Developed independently. Same thing, the SAT is developed, and the PSAT, SAT, PSAT 8-9, which is another assessment, all now are aligned to the Common Core. But obviously, we gave, I believe we gave out some SAT questions last year. We asked the board to do. It's not the same test method. Just as a reminder, the SAT is a paper and pencil test, the SBA is online. So there's different ways of doing the assessments, same thing with NWA. That's an online assessment versus a paper and pencil. So there's a variety of ways to do these assessments. That's why we really do want to look at the full picture on our side. And obviously, as we talked about, it's on the public side as the SBA.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. DeGregor.
I would like to know the shown lady's name.
Lisa Swanson.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
Is that it? I have one quick, I have made a note about a clarifying question. Did I, I believe, did we not used to give the NWA three times a year? It's noted as only twice a year in our packet, so you've decreased the...
Correct. What we discovered is that, very quickly, we did a spring assessment as late as May, and a fall assessment as early as September. You know, realistically, there might have been two weeks of school in between. So what are we going to, we know that there's a drop-off over summer, there's a summer learning loss, and that's essentially what the adjustment was. And also, to give a true measure, we want spring to spring data. So we felt that we could minimize the impact of assessment on our students by reducing it to two and still get valuable data.
Okay, great.
Okay, moving on to high school now, PSAT and SAT. As I said before, we have new tests. October, the PSAT, coming up in a couple weeks here, was a new assessment last 2015 in October. And the March one, the SAT, was brand new as well. So students took the SAT in January, that was the old assessment. And just a few months, a few weeks later, it was the brand-new one in March. So very clear, it's aligned differently, we can't correlate to previous assessments. One other important note is that we expect all of our juniors to take the SAT because it's the state assessment, and previously, it was a choice, a matter of choice for juniors and seniors. The interesting thing, though, is that the scale for all three of those assessments, the PSAT 8-9, which we currently do not give, the PSAT 10, sometimes referred to as the NM...
SQT.
Is that what they said? And then the SAT for juniors and seniors, all use the same scale. So we can use, we don't have to make any adjustments. Essentially, what it does say is that if you're at, and I think I put this in the board packet, if you're at 460 in 10th grade, that might be the appropriate level. And then by 11th grade the next year, you should be at, say, 480. So it does scale up based on the time of year and your grade level. But we can use some comparisons for scale. When we do look at these scores as well, we do not believe that the percentage of students reaching the benchmark or the goal is not where we want it. Quick note, when we do take a look at these scores, the PSAT for 10th and 11th, that benchmark is set by the college board. The SAT for our juniors for 11th grade, that was set by the state, and they're very different. Even the SAT by the national standard for the SAT set by the college board is not as stringent as the Connecticut standard. So this is strictly scale score, this is the average score for our sophomores, the first bar here. This is 10th grade student took it last October. This is 11th graders who took the PSAT last October. Those same juniors took the SAT a few months later in March, in the spring of 2016. So you can see the scale score did improve overall, and there's some learning that took place, thank goodness, between October and March. But when we take a look at the actual percentage of students who reached that benchmark, that goal, we can see that the PSAT for 10th graders, they were 54 percent, this is math again, 39 percent of juniors in October, and then the following March, 36 percent were at the cut score set by the state.
But you need to understand, again, that the blue bars on the right, the goal is set by the college board, not by the state, because it's not a state test. The red is set by the state, so 36 percent, that's met the goal that's set by the state. The distinction is, is that the college board standard, quite frankly, on the SAT is less than the state standard. So that's why Mr. Burke put it in a different color.
I'm more concerned with the PSAT from 54 percent to 39 percent.
Well, we're hopeful, this is, again, 10th grade. So we're hopeful that the 10th grade going into this next assessment in a couple weeks will maintain this percentage, if not right, raise it. That we would not want to see another drop from 10th to 11th grade. These are not the same students, remember, this is 10th graders and 11th graders.
But also, aren't they a different population of students? You don't have the same students taking the PSATs in 10th grade? Not everybody takes it in 10th grade.
We provided it, I don't know if the principals would like to speak up a little bit about what percentage of their 10th graders took it last year?
Almost 100 percent.
Okay.
We provided it, free of charge, to all of our 10th graders and our 11th graders. And it was a Wednesday in the middle of October. We believe it's an important assessment to give our students, also as a practice.
So they are the same populations, really?
Well, remember, 10th grade, this 10th graders, yep, they will be 11th graders this year. So we're very interested to see what their achievement will be this October, and then the following. Just so you know, the SAT was moved into April at request of superintendents to move that forward, not so early in the summer. Any other questions? So again, to do a comparison with our group that we did previously, a concern for us as well, you know, in our math achievement is not where we want it to be. And that is something, I don't know if either one of the principals would, or one of our three principals would like to speak to some of the efforts that are happening at the high school level in terms of our math instruction?
Sure. If you look at, again, utilizing the data of, that we have for math progress, we do use the NWA in ninth grade and 10th grade, so we're looking for growth. And then we do the PSATs for sophomores, for 10th graders, and then again, for 11th graders. So when we identify the kids who are more at risk, we have implemented, thanks to your support, this, our academic support centers, which heavily, heavily mediates math students. And we saw that progress. If you dug down into the data, the students who were struggling the most, so they would be in the 800 to 990 range, that moved in math more significantly. Whereas the next tier, the 1,000 to 1099 score did move, or reminded them to move, which would be to the, you know, 1150 and plus, so...
You're talking about combined scores, though, you're not talking math when you say 890, you're talking combined?
Right. So we're taking the kids who are most at risk or in most need of remediation. And again, primarily, those are our math kids, but they also are seeing, for English and Arts. And we're seeing those kids move the needle. What we're not seeing enough of, quite frankly, are the kids who are in that around, you know, 500 math, 515... know, 500 math, 515 English, getting them to be, getting a total of like 1200. That's where we're, that's the work that's really ahead of us. And that's moving that next tier up more.
I was just going to add that I think that we are, obviously, educating teachers about the new SAT because it is new. And that's an ongoing process. At foreign, I know we have a lot of new teachers and obviously, they have to get up to speed very quickly on that. In addition, we're providing them with the data that they need in order to know where their students are. So, last year's PSAT, those results are going with the student to their teacher this year in the 11th grade to help them be successful on PSAT, but also SAT. And those students that are maybe not up to par are being referred to Student Support Centers, the Numeracy Support Center that was implemented in the last couple of years. Those are just some of the strategies. It's kind of an overview for you to show you that we are obviously not happy with the scores and consciously thinking, how can we target specific students, cohorts of students who are struggling in maybe a specific area and then refer them to the support center in order to have them access the help that they need.
Ms. Swanson, do you want to add anything?
Sure. And I'd like to, it's new. It's a new SAT. So, really, we got those PSAT results back last spring. We started looking at, the nice thing is that every single question on the PSAT is public. And we get by student response how our kids did to our, compared to ourselves, just how did they do? But we also see how other kids did on each and every single question. So, we want to avoid the teach-to-the-test idea. So, we really looked for themes. What, where is it that our kids did not do well and therefore, where is that in our curriculum? And what are we going to do to fix that? Because if it's on the SAT or PSAT and we know that it's somewhere in our curriculum and our kids aren't meeting that, then where is it in our curriculum? What are we asking of students at that time? Really digging in to figure out, how can we ensure that our students can do better on this? But the one caveat is, and Mr. Burke knows that very strongly, that we don't teach the test. I don't want to see, also, we're going to, like, the one action step that's not okay for our teachers is that we're going to just include SAT questions on all of our independent assessments. That's not it. It's an instruction where that's going to happen. So, really figuring out what are some of the overarching themes and then really, how do we then address that? Through our curriculum, through our assessments and through our everyday practices.
Mr. Burke, can I just make one point from a building perspective? I think as we, as we all feel very disappointed in a lot of ways with these scores, the thing that I cannot emphasize enough is this is, it's instructional, it's curricular, it's looking at the data, but the collaboration between the folks working on writing that curriculum, making sure they align to the standards, and the folks in the buildings who are looking at good teaching and using the framework that you have all supported to identify your teaching, that collaboration's really strong. And as somebody at law who supervises and observes the math teachers, my conversations with Mrs. Swanson are like almost daily. Like, it's almost, almost the point of being a little preachy that I keep talking to them. But we do that because I need to know, because I'm an English teacher by trade and I want to learn and I'm able to challenge some of my own thinking after talking to Lisa because there's a lot of delving into that information, sharing best practices. That's how you take, every time they move the needle on these new tests and these new, you know, new additions, new generation, everything you want to talk about, we have to keep up with it. And again, I agree, it's not an excuse, but folks, I know this is happening and we know we have to work to do it. And I wouldn't, I put our money on our teachers because they know the importance of delivering that instruction to the kids to get better results. I really need that.
Other questions on the math? Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. First, were there any specific themes or areas that you found that stood out?
Yeah. So, you just heard me mention systems of equations in 8th grade?
Yep.
Well, guess what's all over the SAT? Systems of equations. And so, really looking at, when we're looking at, when do two lines intersect, when does a curve and a line intersect? Where is that? You know, are we doing enough of that? Are we not? You know, what do we need to emphasize? That actually was one of the biggest themes that really shocked us because we thought that our students really understood that. In our own local assessments, we felt that they were really strong with that, but it didn't come out on those PSAT results last year. And that was the first time, you know, it's, it's one test. It's, we don't have, but with the one test we had, you couldn't dissect it anymore than we spent, really, our spring meetings, those early dismissal days, that's what we were working on, was really peeling into those questions. Because the nice thing about the PSAT now is that really, we digitally get every single response item. We see what they, and we see what they chose as the wrong answer as well. So, we literally see every single response and just, we've never been able to access information so easily like that. So, to take that and then over the summer, work on some curricular changes to then embed in this year's instruction, but still thinking about how are we inserting those overarching themes of, a systems of equations is kind of a fundamental that we really do want all our kids to know. So, if it's all over that test, it's no surprise to us that it is, because we all believe that that's an important understanding for our students.
Okay. My second question is for administration. It's probably a difficult one to ask, but I'm just trying to get a sense because I know you both have many, many years of experience working with different standardized tests and you've probably seen new tests come out before. How long can it take for a district to adapt to a new test? And I realize this is a little bit unusual. You have new curriculum, new tests, I mean, everything is new, but...
Well, I'll go back to my point I made a few minutes ago. It should be regardless of the assessment. It really should be about, are we, are we instructing our students to the best of our abilities, meeting their individual needs? Are we using local assessments, formative assessments, ongoing assessment to determine each individual student's needs and catering our instruction to them, giving them the opportunity to learn themselves, not being completely teacher-centered? If we get there and we do it based on what we believe is a sound set of standards, that we're aiming all that towards, our curriculum, instruction, assessment, we're always aiming towards that goal, combined with what we think are high-level district goals, that's what should be, you know, what we're the target. If we do that and we're conscious of that every single day, at all levels, that's from students all the way up to teachers, to administrators, parents, board members, et cetera, that this is going to improve. And regardless of the assessment, the achievement will be there. It's the danger of, and I can speak to this directly, I was in a district and our cap scores were below our rifle. And they shot up, one year, cap scores were, shot up 15 points. So, we emailed, or back then, I think, believe we called the department chair from the other school. They'd spent the entire year just doing cap writing prompts. And they said it was the worst year of their lives because that's all they did. Well, then the next year, fell down again. So, you know, there is that danger. So, we are trying to flip the conversation to, yes, these are not acceptable scores, but what are we doing about it internally to improve our instruction, to improve our knowledge of where our students are on a regular basis? You know, instead of just a unit test or the end of the semester for an exam? Are, do we know where they are and are we differentiating? What that means is, we got students up here and students up here. These guys got to grow and these guys got to grow even more. So, that's got to be the emphasis. And then the end result, this is where we're going, it's got to improve, you know? So, we could flip it around and do SAT prep for three years, starting in 9th grade.
Yeah. And I, and I understand and I hear your message and I believe in what you're doing. My concern is that a year from now, we'll be sitting here and the scores, you know, are not going to shoot up to where they want, where we want them to be in one year. And people may say, well, you said you were going to do this, this, and this, and that was going to fix it. And I think we need to be realistic, realistic about how long it may take to fix it.
Nothing's going to shoot up in a year. It's going to, we're going to be steady growth. That's why we made, you know, we suggested four-year district goals. It's going to take time to look at assessments, look at our current assessments. I can tell you, I've had tremendous amount of meetings this summer about our midterms and finals at the high school level. Are they aligned with the district goals? Are they aligned with the Common Core? Are they aligned with the claims from SB, well, from SBA in the middle school and the emphasis in the SAT? This is, this is hard work, heavy work that's going to have to shift some of our thinking that we've had for maybe 15, 20 years. So, there is tremendous amount of work, but it's the work we need to do.
What I will say, however, is that going full circle back to the beginning of the presentation, we did make gains at every grade level in math, for example, on 3 through But we didn't see the kind of gains that we really want to see. So, what I would say is, okay, my expectation is next year, we will continue to grow, but that we will see greater gains. You know, are we ready to set a target? I'm not sure if we can set a target with only two years to go on. But what I would say is, and somebody said it, it's not enough for kids to make a year's worth of growth if they need, if they're behind by a year and a half. And they need to make a year and a half and more to be on par. And so, the expectation would be is that we would continue to see growth, but that growth would increase proportionally, if that makes sense.
Yes. That does, both of your answers are, thank you.
Can we ready move on to ELA?
So, I think we've addressed some of the next steps in math, 9 through 12, also consider the time. One of the things that we are recommending possibly in the future is introducing that PSAT 8-9 in the 9th grade at the same time as the 9th and 11th, just again, to give us another data point aligned to that final assessment. And move on to English Language Arts at this point. Similar, you're going to see very similar slides. Again, we believe there's positive news in terms of growth and we're moving in the right direction. And the year-over-year data in SBA, as a reminder, this is 2015, starting with grade 3 to your left, over to grade 8, and then the current year. Some areas that were flat, 7th grade, 6th grade, there was a dip, but then there was some modest progress happening in the other grades. So, in terms of our overall scores, they're not where we want them. You know, 60 percent is higher than the math scores, but still not where we want them. And again, to give you a comparison to the other districts, it's depending upon the grade level. Again, grade 3, Milford scores, 08 to the left, grade 4 in the middle, grade 5 to your right. You know, then, again, there's no consistency in many districts except, except for, it's like...
Shelton.
Yep, Shelton seems to have consistency. Although, we are seeing consistent progress, 60, 64, 69. Same thing, there's much more clear here, 63, 67, 62 by grade level. Terms of cohort, again, remember the graph you saw before. This is year-to-year, same groups of students. And interestingly enough, we're seeing, seeing progress in the younger grades, grades 3, grade 4, grade 5. We're seeing that upward momentum that we want to see more students now reaching that score, making a year's growth plus. That's what we've been talking about. If they just, if the students were below the goal score and they made just one year's growth, they would not be counted towards here because they didn't eventually make that goal score. We are concerned, obviously, about the dip in, from 6 to 7. So, again, this is one of those areas that we're going to concentrate on. I was there, slight dip going students from 6 into 7 and then 7 into 8. Similar graph, again, from before. On the left, achievement score for NWA, different students year-over-year, grade 7. This is 2014, 2015, 2016. We're seeing a steady progress in grade 7. But we saw flat achievement growth in 7th to 7th in SBA. And now, we take a look at, again, we're seeing good growth on this other assessment. So, this is one thing that, as Mr. Caddan spoke to, that we're going to explore further. What is it that's not happening in translating? Although, if you take a look at the overall achievement score here, 72, 67, this is what I was talking about before, very similar. So, the blue bar to blue bar on the outside. This is what at grade level essentially for NWA, 72. And relatively close, this is 67 for 8th grade. 7th grade, more of a gap here. Again, a greater concern. We're seeing significant growth in our local assessment. You know, this is different groups of kids, all in 7th grade, I'm sorry, 8th grade, 2014, 2015, 2016, 8th grade. Some modest progress here in 8th grade in SBA, but look at the gap, 79 to 62. So, again, this is one of those areas where we're saying, wait a second, where's the disconnect between our local assessment and the state assessment? And in terms of growth, you know, very high. This is where we want to see, we want 70-plus for our students, students making the appropriate, you know, the number of students or the percentage of students making the appropriate yearly growth. You know, so, was it 57 for that group in 2014, the end of 2014, those 8th graders? This is, these are good numbers for us, 70 percent growth. So, again, but if they started low, even if they make that good growth, they're not going to get to the cut score, if you will, on the SBA. So, that's, so we're taking a closer look at these two grades, 7th and 8th grade. So, I'm going to hand this over to our Language Arts Supervisor.
Good evening. How are you? Jen Sennel, nice to see you again. Thank you for the time this evening. We've been making some exciting changes in ELA over the last few years, specifically in the middle school. Some of the work that we've been doing is shifting our instructional practice to give students more independent time with eyes on text, with a guided teacher instruction on the side. We're also increasing the amount of time working within text. We want students to do more close reading. We want them to really work within the corners of the text and to do high levels of analysis across several texts. We know in order for students to be literate citizens, they need to be able to synthesize across many different sources of information. This is where we are as a society. So, with the support of the board, we've been making significant shifts to the instructional plan in ELA, which includes including more student choice texts within book clubs, including building units of study around concepts that allow for both informational text reading, which is nonfiction, and narrative text reading, which is fiction, and building a more student-centered approach to small group instruction within the ELA class that's really focusing on the needs of the reader and the writer. I've seen some significant growth in our teachers. They are dedicated to this work. They're excited about it. To mirror what Mrs. Swanson said earlier, the summer work came together and there was a real click in what we were doing in grade 6, 7, and 8. And we're carrying on the good work of our elementary colleagues, building on the readers' and writers' workshop approach in the middle school. So, within that, you're going to see those higher levels of differentiated instruction that Mr. Burke spoke to earlier, where we're targeting instruction around some of these claims and specific skills that certain students need. Not everybody needs to learn commas every year. Some of them have figured it out by grade 6. But some of them, we still need to work on it through grade 8. So, that's where we are in ELA. Again, very, very thankful for your support in growing our programs forward and hopeful that the hard work of the last year, we're going to see dividends in our next year's data results.
Ms. Dzekzinski?
Actually, the growth overall in that ELA looks really good. If you look at the 23 similar school districts, there were only three school districts that improved more than we did. So, that, that's really, you know, a good number. But again, the problem is the middle schools. There was virtually no improvement overall in the middle schools. It was actually less than 1 percent, it was 0.3 percent. I had a question. When did we put in place the departmentalization? Last year?
I think it was last year.
When I visited one of the middle schools, and it was the previous year, I was told that in 6th grade, they had two periods of English and then in the 7th grade, they had one period and in 8th grade, they had one period. And that, one of the reasons why we had, saw so much progress in the middle schools was because of that second period in the 6th grade. When we went to departmentalization, did we eliminate that second period?
I guess the term departmentalization, I thought you meant, we put departmentalization in 4th and 5th grade last year.
4th and 5th?
4th and 5th.
Okay, not in the middle schools?
The middle schools have been operating differently. Well, one of you would have to talk about it.
Do we still have a double?
So, at West Shore, we're in Riverside and East Shore, we're making it more of a, around professional development and especially for the gate professional development, we're looking at having more of a departmentalized focus. That's not a scheduled thing, it's our focus within our meetings. So, what's very strong about the middle schools is our teaming effect. And after the teams get together and they talk about student issues and things like that. But what we're doing is focusing also on departments. So, having time built within professional development for the social studies department to work together 6 through 8, for the English department, 6 through 8, so on and so forth. So, when we're looking at instruction in professional development, when we're looking at NWA, when now we're looking at... looking at the Sback claims, they have that time to collaborate departmentalize as a department in order to find the high leverage skills that are embedded in their instruction where they can deliver. They need that time to be able to talk, to look at data, to look at instructional strategy they can then put in place.
Mr. Caddan, how much time is spent in the classroom? I think that's the question.
Right.
How much language arts is given in sixth grade versus seventh grade versus eighth grade?
Okay, so, and my assistant principal might help me on this one. So in seventh and eighth grade, they take world language. So that gives a different perspective on the having a double block.
They have a single period.
So they have a single period.
Fifty whatever minutes it is a day.
Yep, fifty-one minutes. Sixth grade, they have a rotation, that they rotate a double period in math, science, English, and social studies.
Not every day.
Not every day.
Not every day.
And has that changed from the previous year?
Yeah, that's new this year.
And so they are spending less time on English last year than they did the year before?
In that one class, they are. However, literacy is every subject. So the push is to have them infuse literacy more in social studies, math, science, and incorporate it that way. So it's an eclectic approach versus just having that extra time in language arts. Also due to the reduction in staff, we've had to figure out how to deliver the instruction as well. So we went from double periods to having, like Mr. Caddan said, having that double block every, as a rotation.
You know, the numbers seem to suggest that this isn't working. It's not been a good thing.
But also please keep in mind that we're asking students to do things that they're not common and used to doing. So like Mrs. Sennel said, by having them look at different texts, synthesize it, use a lot of informational text, please remember that on the Sback test, most of it's informational reading. Most of our students do do fictional reading. So that's why the approach of having the students read more in science articles, whether it's a textbook, whether it's something online, in all subject areas, that will eventually bolster our scores. That's going to take time. That's new for all teachers. You know, in the last four years that I've been in this district, that it's all, we're responsible for every subject, teaching literacy in all areas. So as we become more skilled at tearing apart the NWA data and looking at where we, our kids are at the end of this year before, as opposed to where they are at the beginning, where the results are a little bit lower, we know where they came off of their high. Now we can address, this is where they are and take them up that next level. So again, I ask you to be hesitant about where the scores have not gone up recently, have kind of flat, and I agree with you on that. I think we are at a tipping point where we're starting to have these teachers better understand how to use the data moving forward.
So if I may also conclude that, you know, going back again to my history of teaching, it was segmented on the CAPS, that social studies, you got CAPRAT, and English, you got, you know, reading, and math, you got math. Recall from the SAT examples we gave you previously, we can no longer have that approach. We can't have a departmentalized approach to any of these assessments, specifically the SAT, and of course, all grades build up to the SAT in eleventh grade. There are a variety of skills embedded in each of these assessments that cannot be segmented by departmentalization. So as Mr. Gottlieb said, we have to find ways to do informational text in Spanish class. That there's reading strategies that you can do, there's math strategies that we can do in science class and English class. That there's no longer this departmentalization of assessment, so we can't really think of that way in terms of addressing the standards. And I would challenge the assumption that just because we made a change, that there was no progress. We can't make a change and expect an immediate, you know, assumption of the test score. So we are looking at our schedule at the middle school, and we will have this in mind to ensure that we're creating an equitable schedule for all students and that we're providing opportunities for our students to partake in a variety of different courses. You know, as you know, the board recently approved the first career pathway. That's something we have to address to make sure that's in the schedule, as well as possibly adding some different choice for students in the middle school schedule. So there's a lot of things that we have to pay attention to. I see your, I hear your concern. You know, we have the same concern. Was there a tremendous jump? No. Is it flat? Yes. And we would take a look at, is it because there's not enough time dedicated to blank? That would be one of the ways we examine that issue. But I would caution saying we made a single change which resulted in this, creating that causation effect between the two would be, I think, difficult to make.
Yeah. You know, my concern, I, you know, in talking to principals and in talking to teachers, time on task seems to be a critical thing. And, you know, when we talk about, you know, the, you know, any new program, one of the questions I ask is, are we affecting English Language Arts? Are we affecting math? And, you know, I think we have to be very careful about this. You know, hopefully this new strategy is going to work. But, you know, we have taken time on task on English, and we do see the effect of it.
Yep.
I just think, if I'm wrong, but the change just happened this year. This is the first year we're changing. So there hasn't been tested. So there's not, last year, the sixth grade had two periods, the year before they had two periods. This is the first year they don't have that second period. Seventh and eighth grade has never had the second period unless it's a child who's struggling, then they don't have world language. Correct?
Correct.
And the.
So in fifteen, in sixteen.
The change is this September to the double block.
So there's been no testing this time?
Okay.
And what I'm hearing is that while you eliminated the double block in ELA, you're strengthening the use of ELA in the other subjects, using nonfiction text.
Instructional coach.
Through social studies, math, and science.
Also pairing our instructional coaches into those areas to help them strengthen literacy throughout math, science, and social studies.
So every, all four of those subjects at some point have a double period each week?
Yep. And there's some staff that push into those areas, depending on what school you're at, to offer additional support. And each middle school has an instructional coach, and the coach is teaching literacy across the disciplines. And the coach has been paired for that sixth grade in math, science, and social, I mean, English, social studies, and science.
Okay. Any other questions on what we've talked about thus far?
Thank you. So we're shifting into the high school now again, the SAT and SAT. So again, the scores, the SAT is new. It's aligned to the common core. You can't correlate to the previous version. We are seeing the scale scores increase, even though when we do see the scores, they are higher in general, they are still not where we want them to be. So this is the scale score. Again, if you recall, these two assessments, the PSAT, were given in October 2015. The SAT was given in March. This is the average score, going from tenth grade to eleventh grade. Again, these eleventh graders in the fall are the same eleventh graders here in the spring. And this is the percentage at goal. And it's, to remind you, the PSAT is set by the college board. PSAT is set by the college board. The SAT is set by the state. To give you a quick version, too, the SAT score for verbal was set at four ninety. The math was set at five thirty. So there is a forty-point difference in the benchmark score on the state standards. There is not that, from my understanding, the discrepancy is not as large for the PSAT. But according to the college board, ninety-three percent of students that took the PSAT in the fall were at the goal. Ninety-two percent of eleventh graders were. But then you can see that the cut score for the state, which much more stringent, which may account for some of the discrepancy, sixteen-point discrepancy between the fall and the spring in this particular case. Yes?
I'm just curious, do you, did you, do you know what the cut score was for the college board for the SAT in the spring? Just, did those students make growth based on the?
Yeah, I believe it's four ninety, I believe it's four eighty.
Do we know what percentage of kids?
Four eighty. I'm sorry?
So those kids who took the PSAT in eleventh grade, had ninety-two percent, came to goal. What was the percentage based on the college board for the SAT?
I have it, I don't have it with me.
Okay. I'm just curious if you knew what it was.
It's a good question, because I know that.
I meant to ask it for the math.
Well, I was on a conference call with all the superintendents when these scores were released, and one of, somebody raised the question, why did the state set a higher standard than the college board did for the SAT? And we didn't really get an answer that they were going to look at it.
I'm just curious as to if more students met the goal, or if there was an increase or did it decrease based on the same?
Well, more students would have meant, it would increase, because the college board for eleventh graders taking the SAT, meeting their standard is, it's not as rigorous as the state.
Right. So I'm just wondering, the students who took the PSAT in eleventh grade last year, the same group that took the SAT, ninety-two percent met goal for the PSAT, what percentage of those students met it based on the college?
Same for math, we can do that as well.
Couldn't we also get what the actual cut scores are?
Correct. Yes, we can do that as well, for the PSAT and SAT.
Yep. And that, that cut score for the college, set by the college board for the PSAT, is that, are those specific to fall tenth grade and fall eleventh grade?
That is my understanding. I'll confirm that.
Okay, all right.
Just, they do a spring version of the PSAT as well. And my assumption is that that would be a different scale score because you have more, I'm getting nods from folks in the audience, yes.
That's our understanding.
Yes.
That's a spring tenth grade?
There's a spring, well, there's a spring eight, spring nine, spring ten. This time we do not give any one of those assessments.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
In terms of, again, our cohort, if you will, of our similar districts, we are on par with the other districts. But I would also say, again, this is not where we want to be. We want to see this percentage increase as well. We have spoken about some of the alignment when we spoke about mathematics. We're taking a look at all of the practice. We're doing disaggregation of the SAT and PSAT data. We're taking a look at our midterms, final exams, other unit assessments. We're taking a look at our curricula, taking a look at our resources, as well as instruction. So this is a full-fledged attack on our, on our language arts group.
Okay.
Sure.
Actually, I thought the English Language Arts scores were pretty good. I thought they were solid results. But the thing that made me happiest was the gap between foreign and law. Last year, there was a twelve-point-five gap, the previous year. And this year, there was only a two-point-five gap between the two schools, virtually identical. And the other thing is, if you look at the exceeds category instead of the, you know, meets and exceeds, law actually did better than foreign by three-point-six percent. So I mean, for all intents and purposes, we've seen the gap disappear. And also, you see such a tremendous improvement, that tells me that we could also do the same thing in the middle schools.
All right.
We hear you.
Thank you.
We hear you.
So moving on to science scores, this is going to be relatively brief, predominantly because we've moved into new standards at this level. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. We've seen some growth in achievement scores, again, at goal in grade five, essentially flat in grades eight and ten. So just to give you some quick scales here, this is grade five, four years of data. This is percent at goal. This is the CMT for grade five. You can see an increase of fourteen points from 2015 to 2016. Some of that has to do with departmentalization and more time dedicated to science. In eighth grade, again, relatively flat, if not a decrease from 2014. And then overall achievement in grade ten, slight increase, but not where we'd want it to be, obviously. So just to briefly go on to, one of the things that we are not spending a lot of time on this board is because there was new standards approved by the State Board of Education finally in November of last year. And it's a complete realignment to standards, to curriculum, to assessments. We anticipate, and again, they keep changing this on us, we have new assessments planned for the spring of 2019 that'd be aligned to the new standards. So that would require some significant work over the next few years to, again, align our curriculum documents, our instructional practices, as well as all the assessments that we currently give. And you want to speak to it briefly?
Yes. So we have work to do to align to the new standards. But at the same time, we are working in the middle and the high to do some more thorough data analysis and to actually see what's going on at the high school, whether the scores are flat in the middle school. And we're also looking to implementing some diagnostic assessments because these are multi-year, they're assessments that cover multiple years of instruction. So we can put some diagnostic assessments in grade six, and grade seven, and grade nine, so that we can better track where students are in their learning.
That's Jesse Masala. I'm sorry I didn't introduce you before.
Thank you.
It's only been an hour and a half, so I'm losing steam here. Any questions on science? Again, this is something, obviously, the achievement is not where we want it to be. How much time do we dedicate towards an old assessment before we move on to the new assessment? So we're not sure that we're going to see significant improvement over the next two years as we realign ourselves and the assessments remain with the old standards, which is something the state is aware of, and they are telling us that they're not changing the old CMT or CAPS to align to the new standards. They're totally redesigning the assessment. Probably as well, it's currently a paper and pencil test. It will most likely be online as an adaptive test, similar to the SBA.
Any further questions?
This is Casey. Just a comment. Just a big thank you to all our teachers and administrators for all your hard work and your dedication to all our students. I know this data is important. It gives us lots of information. But I know on a daily basis, you guys are working tirelessly in your classrooms, and there is success going on every day. So thank you very much.
Mr. Dr. Zensky?
Are we going to see data on the gap between special ed and regular students and also, you know, financially disadvantaged? Does that come out?
We have to disaggregate that ourselves because, as you well know, the state is no longer, they've clumped, I forget what they call that, the subgroup is now includes free and reduced lunch, English Language Arts.
High needs.
And special ed, and it's all a high needs group. So we have to disaggregate that, which we'll do. We just, you know, that means literally pulling it out student by student. Because they don't, so we can do that and do that in a separate presentation.
And the state doesn't provide those aggregated numbers?
Not, not any longer by special ed.
Right.
And free and reduced. I think eventually they're going to, but right now it's all called high needs and the three are in one.
The most recent information I have from the state is that they, that will now be provided. It wasn't provided last year, but they changed again to say that they will now disaggregate. So that's.
So clarify, please, the, going forward, the state will disaggregate the data for you?
I don't think it's going to be public, but we'll be able to get it from our end, from our secure sites.
Right, without having to do it yourselves?
I believe that's what my understanding is.
But for this year, you'd have to go do it yourself. You have to actually disaggregate the data yourself.
Unless they come out in the next several weeks.
So maybe we should poll the board members and see how many board members are interested in seeing the disaggregated data before you go and do all of that work. It's a significant amount of work, I would imagine, to actually take the data in.
It is. But in all honesty, Mrs. Sennel, I think it is, it's data we will be doing anyways.
Okay, all right.
We would want to do it because we would want to see, you know, how well our students are doing. I know that a tremendous amount of work has been done in language arts with respect to special ed. I'm not so much, I don't know how much in terms of math, but so, but it just may take us some time, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I may just have one final comment. I do want to also thank everybody that came out this evening. I have been in districts where the data presentation strictly is a top-down endeavor. Data is presented, arbitrary goals are set, massage the data as best as possible to give the presentation that you want, and there's no ownership. And I really wanted to say that the folks in this room own this information, own this data, and they're doing what's best for our kids. So I really want to appreciate your support for coming out and your dedication to our students. So, thank you.
So we have the post-graduation plans for 2016. So, we have the post-graduation plans for 2016. We should be able to move through relatively quickly.
So, you had an opportunity to review the data in the board packet. Essentially, just one thing I do want to make note of is on the, on the four-year graduation rates, there was a, the previous versions, we had different categories there. This is the current way in which the state is providing us this information. It is, and I apologize, the first two per law in foreign, the third column over should say is, one bomb does a five-year graduation rate. So, that is one of the new reporting structures from the state. Just to give you an idea, we used to say, you know, four-year graduation rate, and then still in school. That's no longer how this is reported. It's essentially a four-year. There is a five-year, and eventually, we will have six-year data as well. And if you recall from our student achievements report that we gave in January, that is something that's a part of our district average, if you will, the extended cohort rate. So, I don't know if there's any questions on this data?
I think that should be pointed out is the fact that we're improving. If you look, this is on the third page of the report, by the way.
Seventeen.
If you look at the percentage at both schools from 2011 through to 2014, which is the most recent data that we have from the state on this, and then the same way with the district, there's been an increase in the percentage of students who are graduating, both on time, as well as students who are graduating in five years. So, that's good news.
I do have a question about the figures, because-
There's a typo.
Oh. I was going to say, both our high schools were above average, which only happens at, like, whoa, we've gone.
It should be 93.8.
And where is that, please?
If you look at district, the last table there-
Yep.
-under 2015 four-year graduation rate, should read 93.8. So, you can see the progression there, 85, 92, 93.8. So, as Dr. Fieser was saying, it is a continual progression.
Yes, Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we look at the figures for the district, does that also include the academy?
Yes, and the academy's included in both foreign and law, because they're not, they're not a school, per se.
Okay.
So, they're, wherever their home school is of all their students, they would then be incorporated in both the high school and law.
Okay.
And I think we really need to commend the high schools, because here's an area where the both principals really, when that 2011 rate came out in both schools, they both just, just said to their staff, we know, we can do better than this. And both concentrating on kids who were moving into their senior year, but also really concentrating on ninth grade, and getting kids to make it into 10th grade on time, which there's a lot of research that shows if kids can enter into 10th grade from ninth grade, they exponentially have a greater chance of graduating on time. That both high schools really concentrated on that, and we can see the results there. And also, just a reminder that kids who are, so, special ed students who, quote, finished the high school but remain with us, some until age 21, they're counted as, but then fifth-year graduates or sixth-year graduates when the state actually gets to that point of doing the sixth year. The unfortunate thing, which we've disagreed with, because this is how the state do it, does it, is is that when you see the actual accountability report from the state, we get points taken off for students who graduate five years or six years, which is contradictory, because mandated by law, the students have, can stay with us until age 21, but if they don't graduate in four years, as special ed students, we're penalized. I just want to point that out.
How big is that number? Are there-
Well, we don't have, we haven't received an accountability report since 2014.
No, I meant the, how many students actually stay till 21?
Do you know that offhand?
I don't know it offhand. I know, and we have several programs that take place till kids are 21, and there's eight or nine kids in each of the programs, but I could certainly get a total for you.
So, Dr. Fieser, just to clarify, are you saying that if they reach, they're staying till they're 21, but if they are considered finished high school, but still in a program by the fifth year, then they're fifth-year graduates?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Or, for example, students at the academy, if they, if it takes five years for them to graduate, sometimes it takes six years to graduate. We applaud it, because we want to see kids get a high school diploma.
Right.
I mean, the kids come back, they work their tails off, they, you know, they, but the state has set that the, you know, the optimal is four years.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Also, that, right? Okay. So, now we move on to the policy work. Dr. Fieser, correct?
Yes. So, we have, we have five policies that are being brought through before. The first three, no, four policies, excuse me. The first two policies are for a second reading and action, so this would be policy 114, all distribution of materials to and by students, and also 1212 on school volunteers. These two, you can see the changes-
Housekeeping.
Are housekeeping. So-
A device of no motion. This device has a motion for these two?
Do I make a motion? And the Milford Board of Education approves the following community relations policies as presented. Number one is P 1140, and number two, P 1212.
Second. P, I'm sorry, P 1212. 1212, you're right. Thank you. Sorry, my bad. Second by Ms. Federico?
Second.
Any discussion on these two? For housekeeping charges? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
But the next policy is on public complaints. Mrs. Leonard, did you want to address that one?
Yes. We had talked about this last month, and I went back through our, we talked about the difference between our district policies and the policy governance and the relationship between the superintendent. And so, our policy governance does actually, does direct the superintendent in her executive limitations to notify the Board of Resolutions of significant grievances and complaints. But there will still be instances, as we discussed last month, where confidentiality might prevent her from disclosing information, and those would be situations that might come up generally within the district. I think it, the important thing to remember with these, there's a couple of things with this particular policy, is that, you know, the policy itself is a basic generic cave policy that is actually used in many districts, and it identifies the chain of command that is pretty universal, I think, across, across districts. And as presented, it is consistent with a variety of areas within our board bylaws and our policy governance. But the most important thing that really didn't get into a conversation last, the last meeting, is that, you know, if you look, the last step in the chain of command is the board. And as a Board of Education, we could become the arbiter of a complaint, serving within our quasi-judicial capacity, as we've talked about during our orientation sessions with Attorney Dugas. So, as a result, it really is important that the board keep its distance in the complaint process, because if you ingrain yourselves with the process of the complaint and watch it, you know, go through it, you know, from beginning to end, it puts you in a position to have to recuse yourself if it gets to a grievance or a hearing before the board, because you've already put yourself in the middle of the process. And that, you know, even goes to say, to be informed of what the outcome was. It's important, as a board, when we are playing the role of arbiter or serving in a hearing, a hearing capacity, that we go in with an open mind and not have any preconceived notions, any preconceived ideas, or, you know, and in some instances, even any knowledge, you know, direct knowledge of what the complaint has to do with. So, I think that, for me, this policy as it stands now is, is the way it should be. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any of the, any changes to it personally. So, but I think the, I think the concerns that were raised last meeting are accounted for within our policy governance work, our policy governance manual. So, is there any other conversation about that, this policy? There were no actual changes to it that we have implemented, as what was presented last month. All right, then, seeing none, take a motion, Ms. Tobias?
Yep. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy number 1312, public complaints as presented.
Is there discussion?
Second.
I'm sorry, second, not discussion. All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last one here for this evening is 1311 on political activities in the schools. And if you remember in the conversation that took place at the last meeting, there was a question and a concern raised about wanting to make sure the policy addressed the issue of equity. If I remember how it was framed, it was that if, if a candidate from one party is brought in, particularly with respect to, for political, you know, like, for example, during the political season right now, that the other party should also be given sort of equal representation in the sense of equal time. So, we indicated that we would go back and look at some other policies and see if we could find some language that we thought would address the issue. So, we did. We looked at a number of policies from different districts, and also some of the ones that CAVE had sent us. And this is language from two different pieces that we combined, that we're, we think may be addressing what was raised. So, as you can see, political candidates may be invited to address students as part of the study of a political process in elections. Teachers will see that all candidates for the particular office that is under study are given the opportunity to address the students for equal times. Teachers may display campaign material when it is part of the curriculum, as long as fairness and equity are observed, and that it's up to the principal to ensure that all candidates are treated impartially and objectively. And that's the new piece. There's other pieces in here that basically puts the onus of responsibility on the classroom teacher with respect to he or she, what, how they, how that person goes about teaching about a particular issue that has political ramifications to it.
So, am I correct, Dr. Fieser, that all of the red is-
What had been brought in four years?
From the last, the last meeting, and you've just added the green to address the concerns that were brought up?
Correct.
Any conversation on that? Meet your needs? Meet your concerns?
Sounds perfect.
Okay, great. Are we good? All right, Ms. Tobias?
Okay. Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 1311, political activities in the schools with their recommended pages.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Anybody here wish to address the board this evening from the public? All right, seeing none, we move on to a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Let's not argue over the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, we are-
We have nine seconds. Before everyone leaves, I have-
Okay.
I forgot to bring before the-
Oh, sorry.
You know what? I sent you an email back. I kind of go back to you, and I sent you my email.
Thank you.